Well, good afternoon. We're calling to order the City Council meeting of January 23, 2024. May we please have roll call?
Yes, Council members.
Here.
Divine, Nadarian.
Here.
Mayor Botman and Mayor Protem Kasakian.
Present here. Mayor Botman is not here in Glendale. He is traveling, so I'm filling in as Mayor Protem. But Councilmember Divine is here, and she'll be joining us in closed session. Can we please have the closed session items read into the record?
Yes. Closed session item A, Public Employee Appointment, Senior Assistant City Attorney. B, Conference with Legal, with Labor Negotiators. The city-designated negotiators attending the closed session are Rubek Olanyan, John Tachtalian, Michael J. Garcia, Gillian Van Miden, Paul Adams, Amy Martin, Jason Bradford, and Peter Brown. The name of the employee organization is Glendale City Employees Association.
Are we anticipating reporting out on either of these items?
Item one A, we're anticipating reporting out Mr. Protem.
Okay. With that, we will recess to closed session. All right, welcome everyone to the January 23rd City Council meeting for the year 2024. Let us have roll call, please.
Councilmembers.
Here.
Divine.
Here.
Nadarian.
Here.
Mayor Botman and Mayor Protem Kasakian.
Here. Thank you. Please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country and remain standing for the invocation delivered by City Clerk Kabajin. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready?
My allegiance exists to the God of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Garbiyalin O'tangwa people. Let us embrace the dance of the present moment, recognizing that true understanding begins with the art of attentive listening. In a world filled with noise, may we find solace in the quiet spaces where understanding is cultivated. As we navigate the currents of conversation, let our minds be fully present, our ears attuned to the nuances of every word spoken. May our interactions be characterized by empathy and open-hearted engagement. In the dance of dialogue, may we appreciate the rhythm of shared experiences and the beauty of diverse perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the January 23rd, 2024 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on January 18th, 2024 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much. Next is presentation and appointments.
Yes, Agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, January 30th, 2024 by Assistant City Manager John Tachtalian.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Kasakian, members of City Council. Next week, we have three meetings, starting in the afternoon. We'll start off with a joint meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority with one item, and that'll be regarding the execution of a letter of loan commitment and lease option with EAH Housing for a 68-unit affordable rental project for seniors. That'll be located at 426 Piedmont Avenue and 507 Naranja Drive. We'll also have a special meeting of the City Council that afternoon. That'll be related to the land use and circulation element. That'll include the project update and proposed amendments to the existing contract with the Novo Planning Group. For the evening's council meeting, we have three consent items. I'm sorry, we have one consent item from the Public Works Department. That'll be related to an award of a professional services agreement for an update of the city's fleet electrification plan. We have three action items. The first would be asking council to select a voting delegate and alternate for the 2024 Southern California Association of Governments General Assembly. The next item would be an introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 9.30 related to the rental rights program. And the final action item that evening will be the introduction of an ordinance from Public Works regarding private and public and private indigenous tree protections. The last item that evening will be a hearing of an appeal of the Design Review Board's approval to demolish the existing commercial stables and associated structures and construct three new buildings for a commercial stable and kennel located at 1900 Riverside Drive.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have a special presentation. Madam Clerk, can you please read into the record?
Yes, we have commendations for the Student Exchange Delegation Visit from Sister City, Bona, South Korea.
All right, thank you very much. Now, for those of you who may not know, Glendale has a number of sister cities in Korea. Bona is one of them, and we have a exciting presentation because we have 10 students from Bona who've visited Glendale and are here in these chambers to grace us with their presence. We appreciate you being here. They're part of a exchange program with Rosemont, I believe, Middle School. Is that correct? So let me ask our planning commissioner, Mr. Changly, to come up to the podium and introduce the group.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, honorable council members and city staff. It is my utmost pleasure to announce that our student exchange program is now in full swing again, is resuming. Because of the pandemic for the last, you know, few years, we had to stop the program, but as Mayor Protem Kasakian said, 10 students from Bona, they are here to have the student exchange relationship with Rosemont Middle School. So I'm not gonna say too many words. I'm gonna bring up the students, and then one of the students, Yeogun, is gonna, you know, make a short speech. But this students while they're here in Glendale is hosted, the homestay hosted by Korean American Federation of North Los Angeles, and which we have chairman and the officer from North LA Federation is here, so we thank them for hosting the students. So without further ado, I'd like to bring up all the students here. And then. Okay, and Yeogun will speak on their behalf.
Welcome.
Hello. Pleasure to meet you. My name is Kim Yeogun from Bona County, the Republic of Korea. I'm a little bit nervous to speak in such a big place. First of all, thank you for leaving us to this Glendale City Hall. I was so happy and excited to experience American culture. On the other hand, I was worried because I had to face difficulties in communication in English and unfamiliar environment. But thanks for your warm welcoming, I could feel relieved. On this trip, I wanna experience the culture of the United States and learn a lot by taking classes with friends at Rosemont Middle School. Once again, I would like to thank you on behalf of my friends. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Yeogun. And the Bona students, they brought gifts for each council members, so if you can come down and so they can present the present to you.
And before we come down, yeah, we have a presentation of commendations for them. So it's an exchange, although I don't know if it'll be an even exchange, but we have here for them, for each of the students, we have some pins that we will pass out. And we'd also like to recognize the Korean American Federation of North Los Angeles, the Sister City Student Exchange Program from Bona to Glendale, 2024. I know that COVID made it impossible for us to have this exchange program, but we're resuming it now. And this is in recognition of your contributions and commitment to the Sister City Student Exchange Delegation Program. Your tireless efforts will impact these young lives for years to come. We thank you and appreciate your hard work to make this program possible. On behalf of the City of Glendale, we wish you continued success. These are signed by Mayor Dan Botman, who is not here today. He is traveling, and we have mayor's commendations for each of the students as well. So we'll come down to pass these out, and thank you. And also, TC Kim, thank you for coming. Mr. Kim is a member of our Police Foundation Board, as well as, I believe, a former commissioner. Let's pass these out and have some photos taken with our guests, and again, thank you for coming. All right, everyone come over here and face that way. Let's face away. Yeah, okay, okay.
Look at me. Look at me. One, two, three, smile. One, two, three. This is for Dan. We need a bigger city hall.
Okay, good. Everybody smile.
One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you again, and we wish our friends from Korea a wonderful rest of their stay and appreciate their visit. For those who are watching and may not know, not only do we have a very vibrant Korean-American community here in Glendale, but also we have one of our public schools, which is a dual-language immersion school where students learn how to speak, read, and write in Korean from kindergarten, I think up to the fifth grade, maybe the sixth. But again, a great opportunity to have a cultural exchange. Now, the next presentation we have is not listed on our agenda because it was a last-minute addition, but one that is very important. We have with us today, for those who have been following the news and know what has been happening across the world in Armenia and the Republic of Artsakh, the ethnic cleansing, the protests, the demonstrations that happened here in Glendale and throughout the world in solidarity with our friends from, for our friends in Armenia, our relatives, our loved ones. There were a couple of voices that were continuously at the forefront of speaking about what was going to happen, even before it happened. Once Azerbaijan mercilessly attacked the civilian population of Artsakh, they were right there in the eye of the storm, in the center of what was happening, reporting live oftentimes from places where shells were falling on civilian homes, on men, women, and innocent children. And he now is with us in these chambers. He is a former state minister of the Republic of Artsakh, and prior to that, he was the ombudsman for human rights, Artak Beglarian. Joining him is also Keram Stepanian, human rights defender of the Republic of Artsakh. And joining them and helping bring them here for a special event that I'm sure they will share with us about when and where are members of the Armenian Bar Association Board of Governors. Joining us in our chambers this evening is Honorable Judge Arminuhi Ashvanian, Steve Dedayan, Vice Chair of the Armenian Bar Association, Mesreb Huda Gulyan, Treasurer Lucy Varpetyan, Immediate Past Chair, and Armin Hovanisian, Former Chair, as well as members of the Young Lawyers Committee of the Armenian Bar Association and members of the Armenian Rights Watch Committee of the Armenian Bar Association. So I'd like to welcome you up to the podium. If you could please come and perhaps say a few words, share with us about the event that is being organized. And while they're here, I would also like to ask that we agendize the adoption of a resolution by the City of Glendale condemning the ethnic cleansing and genocide of the Armenian people in the Republic of Artsakh language. I will submit to the city manager, but before I do, I'll just read it briefly to be on the record, and we'll formally, once we have a discussion to have this agendized, we'll take it under consideration. We weren't able to do so sooner because of our council adopted procedures, but I'll read whereas. Whereas Artsakh formerly referred to as Nagorno-Karabakh is the ancestral homeland of the Armenian people and has been a center of Armenian language, culture, and religion, having maintained its autonomy for over two millennia. And whereas despite Artsakh's distinctly Armenian identity, it was arbitrarily and illegally separated from Armenia by the Soviet Union at the direction of Joseph Stalin in 1921 and placed under the administrative control of Soviet Azerbaijan. And whereas in response to escalating anti-Armenian violence, the Armenians of Artsakh exercised their right to self-determination and declared their independence on September 2nd, 1991. Whereas Azerbaijan shortly thereafter launched a war of aggression against Armenia and Artsakh that saw Azerbaijan lay siege to Armenian towns and cities and perpetrate human rights violations, which ended in Armenian victory with a ceasefire brokered by Russia. Whereas for the next 25 years, the Armenians of Artsakh consolidated free and democratic society. Whereas in September 2020, Azerbaijan abandoned decades of multilateral diplomacy and launched a war of territorial expansion against the Armenians of Artsakh that resulted in the ethnic cleansing of over 70% of Artsakh territory and perpetrated widely documented human rights abuses, including the unlawful targeting of schools, homes, hospitals, and churches with prohibited weapons, the execution of Armenian civilians, and torture of Armenian prisoners of war. Whereas following a trilateral ceasefire statement signed in November in 2020, Azerbaijan's aggression continued, including routine incursions in Artsakh territory and the continuous invasion and occupation of the sovereign territory of the Republic of Armenia since May 2021. And whereas Azerbaijan maintained a total blockade of Artsakh beginning on December 12th, 2022, completely severing Artsakh's only humanitarian lifeline to Armenia, preventing the transport of food, fuel, medicine, vital humanitarian supplies to the region, and leaving Artsakh's 120,000 Armenians facing critical shortages of life-sustaining goods. Whereas in late September 2023, Azerbaijan militarily overwhelmed Artsakh and completely cleansed Artsakh of all Armenians and committed an act of genocide. Whereas the City of Glendale is home to the largest Armenian-American population in the United States, and whereas the City of Glendale has been the forefront of efforts to raise awareness of the plight of the indigenous Armenian population amidst Azerbaijan's relentless aggression. Whereas the U.S. acknowledges the threat Azerbaijan has posed to the Armenians of Artsakh with the passage of Section 907 of the Freedom Support Act in 1992 in the U.S. Congress, which prohibited the provision of the United States Assistant to Azerbaijan until time it ceases all blockades and offensive use of force against Armenia and Nagorno-Karabakh. And whereas, beginning in September 2020 and ending in September 2023, Azerbaijan abandoned all civilized value and executed a genocide which culminated in the complete ethnic cleansing of this millennia-old Armenian homeland, displacing its entire population of 120,000 Christian Armenians and seizing many of the most sacred churches and sites in Armenian Christendom. Now therefore be resolved the Council of City of Glendale that we find the leaders of Azerbaijan responsible for the international crime of genocide and implore the United States of America to act in accordance with the obligations under the Genocide Convention to use all its power to punish and prevent the ongoing effects of the genocide by ensuring an immediate safe return of the Artsakh people to their lands and punish those responsible in conformance with international law. I'll submit this to the city manager, and I'd like to ask if any of my colleagues would second us to consider a discussion and passage of that resolution.
I'll second, of course.
Thank you. Right. So I'd like to ask, I see Mr. Dedayan rising. You could come up and say a few words, and also let us know about the special event that'll take place, I believe, tomorrow.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem, honorable members of the council. I'm here as the Vice Chairman of the Armenian Bar Association. I'm happy to announce that we're having our annual meeting this weekend in Glendale at the Embassy Suites Hotel. We have a reception on Friday night at the Brand Library. And it's an important event for us because this is the 35th anniversary of our organization. We have over 1,000 members across the country, Armenian attorneys who are members of our organization. We're expecting hundreds of them here in Glendale over this weekend. And we're thankful for the accommodations the City of Glendale has always provided the Armenian Bar Association in the past. Now, as Mayor Protem stated, we have guests from the Republic of Artsakh. Actually, they're actual living genocide victims here today. And as an American Armenian whose four grandparents were orphans from the genocide in 1915, it's a, it's an unusual, it's an unusual and a sad feeling that we have that we're seeing another Armenian genocide and victims of another Armenian genocide before us, in front of our eyes in the modern era. Let me say that tomorrow night, we're having a, an event down the street at the library, right next door to the library, at the Community Hall on 120 South Artsakh Avenue at 7:00 PM. We're gonna have both of our speakers. We're going to have both of our speakers from Artsakh, former government members, present to the community at large. We welcome everyone to attend. Again, it's 120 South, actually, it's 201 East Colorado Street. Parking is on Artsakh Street. It starts at 7:00 P.M. It's going to be moderated by Los Angeles County Judge Amy Ashvanyan, who's here with us this evening as well. And we encourage everyone from the community to attend. I know I don't have much time, so I'll yield my time to our guests. Thank you.
Mr. Stepanian, welcome.
Thank you very much. First of all, honorable members of City Council, I would like to, being here physically, personally, I want to convey the gratitude of Artsakh people who have always felt the support of your support and the support of, of the Armenian community of Glendale, especially in the issues related to the self-determination of Artsakh people and raising awareness about the human rights violations coming from the Azerbaijani side against our people. You know, I'm sure that everyone here is very well aware about the terrible reality that we went through, starting especially after the war unleashed by Azerbaijan in 2020. And the final phase of ethnic cleaning or genocide of Artsakh people happened, starting from a blockade of December 2022, and it ended with a complete eviction of Armenian population from Artsakh. Personally, being a human rights defender or ombudsman and having a very strong belief in human rights, I think that what happened to the people of Artsakh is a failure of international law, international community. But we should also be thankful to all those members of international community who always stand by human rights. And being here, I want to say and to deliver the message of Artsakh people saying that even if we today do not live in Artsakh, the goal of collective return of Artsakh people to our ancestral land will always remain with us, and we will continue our struggle to ensure our dignified life in our homeland. And in this cause, we always will expect your help, your support. And so concluding, I want to express once again our gratitude and to say, to be thankful for always standing by the human rights and justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Beglarian.
Thank you, honorable council members of the City Glendale. Thanks for this opportunity to talk here, to present the situation, and also to talk about our struggle, the struggle of the Artsakh people, the struggle of the Armenian nation and civilized world for human rights, freedoms, democracy, and justice, which are very vital for the American people. And we always felt the support of the Glendale city, both as sister city of Martuni, town of Artsakh, and just having the Armenian large community in Glendale and having some both moral and practical support to the Artsakh people. Now we are genocided, we are uprooted from our ancestral homeland, but we are continuing our struggle for our rights, for our freedoms, our democracy and justice, and the values that we are sharing together with you. That's why it's very important to have your support continuous, very important to have your voice in order to raise our voice to the American people and to your network worldwide and to stand by the Artsakh people and the justice worldwide. It's important to prevent new genocides, not only in Armenia, in Artsakh, but also worldwide. And having the genocided Armenian people since 1915 by now, it means that the world, the humanity so far has failed to prevent new genocides. That's why we are here. And to say that no genocide again should happen anywhere in the world. And protecting us, it means you are protecting the humanity. Protecting us, it means you are protecting the values and the rights that the American state is based on. Thanks for your support. Thanks for having this resolution, and we believe that this resolution and your next steps will be new beginning of a new struggle. And the end of that struggle should be collective return, safe, dignified, and sustainable life of the Artsakh people in our ancestral homeland. It will be the victory of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll ask if my colleagues, any of them would like to share any of their words?
I'd like to welcome you to the City of Glendale. I wish this meet was under better circumstances and happier times. I will say that your struggle is our collective struggle, not just as a body, but as individuals. As the great granddaughter of a genocide survivor myself, and I think I speak for every Armenian-American around the world, not just in Glendale. The events that took place in Artsakh and Armenia continue to haunt us to date, but I also know that we are people who are survivors, who rise from the ashes and who continue to rebuild. And while I wasn't able to visit Martuni during my last time, I visited the other sister cities this time last year. I know the day will come that we'll be able to go back on those lands that are our ancestral lands. So I recognize that we've introduced or we look forward to doing the resolution. But I will say, as an Armenian-American, resolutions at this point and statements are the absolute minimum that we could be doing. And so I think I struggle with the statements that come out of our elected officials from different levels of government that are not followed through with action. Our tax dollars are continuing to go and fund Azerbaijan and its human rights violations. And so I look forward to the opportunity to hear from you what more we can do as a city beyond just the resolution, because this may be a statement and we wholeheartedly stand behind it, but resources are needed for those that have lost their homes. And anything that we can do in that, in that space, I think we would be very much ready to do that. Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Beglarian and Mr. Stepanian, as well as the Armenian Bar Association for facilitating your travel to speak to us in Glendale. I can assure you that the people of Glendale, not just the Armenians, but the people of Glendale were suffering as well with the people of Armenia and Artsakh when the war started in 2020, up until the tragedy of us being wiped off of our ancient homeland in Artsakh. It's, looking back, it's nothing short of a nightmare for the Armenian communities across the United States and the world. We all have to play our own part. As politicians, we can make statements, we can issue letters, we can make demands. As residents, we were marching in front of the consulate, marching through the streets of Glendale, holding candlelight vigils, shouting and praying that we thought that, that we hoped the worst would not occur. Unfortunately, it did occur. But as, as my colleague said, we are like the phoenix. We have fought battles before, we have lost battles before as Armenians, but we have always come back, risen to the challenge, and prospered even more. So it's my hope that with your help and your guidance, the people of Artsakh, Mr. Beglarian, Mr. Stepanian, and everyone else in the leadership will prepare for the new birth of Armenians in Artsakh, and we will continue our millennium-old presence in our homeland. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you for being here. I know we've met before, and I appreciate you being here. I want you to know on behalf of the non-Armenian community that we are with you 100%. One would think that by now, society would have learned that genocide is not acceptable, that it is absolutely against every core of humanity. I am Ukrainian. I know what the suffering is, it is going on there. And I, I just hope that and pray that one day you will be able to go back to your homeland, your ancestral homeland. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I echo everything that my colleagues have said and appreciate truly your courage and your ability to share your pain and your experience with people who watched what unfolded in real time from afar. Mr. Beglarian has been praised by human rights associations and organizations, individuals like former U.S. Ambassador John Evans for his work and his relentless advocacy for basic human rights, as you said, values that we as Americans hold dear, life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness on the lands that your forefathers told the soil of. And I know that your vision was taken from you because of an accident with an unexploded ammunition when you were a child, but the rest of us who can see what is happening must be able to share it and speak loudly and yell from the mountaintops for justice for the people of Armenia and Artsakh, and we cannot be blind. So there, we do have a caller apparently for this portion of the agenda. We don't usually, but let's hear what the caller has. Three minutes for whoever is on, on the line.
We have Tom Oshonisi on line. Tom, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening to the council, to the mayor, and to the delegation from Armenia. As a Vietnam veteran, I, and also a world traveler, I have visited places such as South Africa, Nicaragua, Oceania, Northern Ireland, in solidarity on ending struggles. As you know, the Union of South Africa has taken a case to the ICJ, the International Court of Justice on what's happening in the Middle East. I would hope that our nation, the United States, would look at this and take an action to the ICJ as well. I think it's not just a matter of humanity, it is a moral obligation to stand in solidarity and to support justice for the Armenian people in Armenia as we support it elsewhere in the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. With that, thank you again for your presence here. We'll hope to see you, those of us who can, tomorrow at the event sponsored by the Armenian Bar Association. Clerk Kabajin, can you please read what's next on the agenda?
Yes. Next are consent items, including minutes, the following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. Item 4D is being moved to the February 6 council meeting, and also there is a member of the public who would like to pull item 4E.
Okay. With 4D having been moved to a later meeting and with the exception of 4E, would anyone else like to, would any of my colleagues like to move the balance of the consent?
Balance? Second?
Motion made by Councilmember Asadriyan and seconded by Councilmember Divine. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, council members, Asadriyan?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman? And Mayor Protam Kassakian?
Yes. May we have item E right into the record?
Yes. Item 4E is Glendale Water and Power Regarding Task Order With Ascent Analytics LLC For Software License and Support Services For Integrated Resource Planning For Glendale Water and Power. One motion authorizing the city manager or his designate to execute a task order with Ascent Analytics LLC under an agreement with the Southern California Public Power Authority for continued software license and support services for integrated resource planning for Glendale Water and Power for a total contract not to exceed amount of $394,064.46 for a three-year term, with an option for the city to extend the contract for two additional one-year terms in a total amount not to exceed $279,402.64 for both years, and authorizing a one-time payment of $12,285.96 for outstanding portion of a prior annual fee.
All right, thank you. Let's have our speaker who pulled the item.
Our speaker is Jackie Gish. Jackie, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I didn't actually want to have it pulled necessarily, but I have some questions about it. So I have a question on the current IRP. Has the draft been revised since it was presented to city council in December? If so, where is it available to the public? It is not, I don't believe, on the IRP webpage. If it is not yet completed, when will it be completed, and how many of these dollars are going to just complete that? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Staff, if you want to respond.
Mayor Protam, Salkian, members of city council, appreciate the speaker's questions, although not directly related to this item. That draft hasn't been completed. As, as was mentioned, it was only mid-December that we received direction contrary to staff's recommendation. So staff's still working on it, so it hasn't been completed.
Okay. Any estimated timeline of when we can expect?
I don't believe so. It's so early in the process that we won't be able to give you an estimate. We have to consult with our outside consultants.
Okay, well, I would hope that once we do have a more concrete timeline, we can report back both to council and to the public that wants to know. Yes.
I think the only question that was pertaining to this item was how much of the costs from here are going towards the IRP?
Again, councilmember Salkian, this item is not to pay for that exercise or that effort.
Okay. Then who would like to make the motion on item 4E?
I'll move it.
And who seconded that? All right, moved by councilmember Asadriyan and seconded by councilmember Najarian. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, councilmember Asadriyan?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman? And Mayor Protam Kassakian?
Yes. All right, thank you. What is next?
Next are city council and staff comments.
May my colleagues wish to speak. Councilmember Divine?
Thank you. Thank you. As a lot of you may know, or some may not know, councilmember Najarian and I serve on the Hollywood Burbank Airport Authority, along with former mayor Frank Cintero representing Glendale. A major event will take place this Thursday at the airport. We will be officially breaking ground for the replacement terminal, which you see on your TV right now. After many years, the authority has approved the design and the development of this beautiful Hollywood-inspired airport of design. Having been selected by the public voting, we had, I don't know if any of you remember, we had the sketches downstairs and offered the public a chance to vote, and the airport authority also voted, and we all liked this particular design. So the replacement terminal is proposed to be completed by 2026. There will be the same number of gates, and the terminal will be state-of-the-art, and most importantly, a safe distance from the runway. It's a big day for Burbank, Pasadena, and Glendale, and all those who travel through the Burbank Airport. A sign of progress and focus on safety while still maintaining the airport's customer-friendly experience. Hope you are as excited as we are for the groundbreaking, and of course, we all hope to be there for the grand opening. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember.
The only comment I have is to give a shout out to our
The only comment I have is to give a shout out to our library arts and culture. For those that attended on Saturday, we had the opening of the Shepherd Ferry exhibition, I think. I don't think I've ever been so excited for an event that was happening in our city. I'm a personal fan, but Ara and Ana Haido Shagan did an incredible job with the curation. That exhibit's going to be at the library, I believe, until April 14th. And I will have to say that the programming around it and the use of the library space in such a social, like a social setting that way, Shepherd Ferry was DJing for those that, you know, were attendants. But I would love to see us in the future use that space in that manner more often over the weekends. So kudos to everybody that was involved.
Councilmember Asatrian, we had, there were over 500 people in attendance. Huge event.
Councilmember Najarian?
So for all you bike lovers out there, skateboarders, scooters, and walkers, good news coming from Metro. On October 19th of this year, we are going to be having our second Ciclovia event. We call it Open Streets Events. This is called the Be Street Smart for Glendale Avenue. This is funded entirely by a grant from Metro. Metro will be voting on this on Thursday to the amount of $400,000. We are one of the few cities that was fully funded for this event. This is a temporary event. We aren't going to be taking lanes away permanently, but we will be having a significant street closure where people, without cars, can travel up and down. So that's very good news. There was a, there was a backdoor effort by other cities to take that money away from Glendale because we did have one, it must have been about seven years ago, I think. But we were ever vigilant and made sure that that funding remained intact for Glendale. The other thing that's going on at the Metro meeting on Thursday is an allocation of $8 million for improvements to Verdugo Road and North Verdugo Road, including signalization and traffic signal modifications and pedestrian improvements. That is coming from the Measure R subregional highway funds. And we are getting the lion's share of the funding for our region, which includes Burbank, Glendale, LA County, La Cañada, et cetera. So I know that should make our new Public Works Director happy, that there's some additional funding coming in. I don't know exactly what those improvements entail, but you can update us, maybe. I hope there's no road diets. We're not taking away any lanes, are we? Because we did that on North Verdugo Road once. Just so people remember, we did do some improvements. We took a lane in each direction for bicycling, and it was quite an outcry. And I don't believe that's what we're doing. We're doing signal modification and some pedestrian improvements. So that's what's going on at the Metro Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. And speaking of Public Works, Mr. Galanian, I know there's a new face in the bullpen. Would you like to make a brief introduction?
Yes. Thank you. Mayor Protem Kasakian, Member of City Council, and the public. I'd like to introduce our interim Public Works Director, Daniel Hernandez, who's been a Public Works Director for the last eight years or so in three different cities, agencies in Southern California. And we welcome him joining our team and helping us out for the interim period.
Thank you. We wish Mr. Amrani, who has moved on well, and welcome our new interim director. With that, if there are no other staff comments, there are none, let's move on to community event announcements, a three-minute portion. Do we have any cards for this portion?
We have one card.
All right. Alan Durham?
Mayor Protem Kasakian, members of the council. I'm Alan Durham. I hope all Glendale residents know that we have a city election coming up on March 5th, and there are seven candidates running for two city council seats. Several candidate forums have already been scheduled. The first one is this Thursday evening, January 25th, at 7:00 PM. It will be a moderated forum in a question-and-answer format. It's being sponsored by the Verdugo Woodlands West Neighborhood Association and by the Verdugo Woodlands Dads Club. That's D-A-D, yes. Stephen Meek thought I was saying there was a new dance club on Verdugo. And it will take place at the Verdugo Woodlands Dads Club, again, 7:00 PM, 1728, Cañada Boulevard. Meter parking's available at Lot 34. There's free two-hour parking in the neighborhood north of the club. And there's a list of three additional upcoming candidate forums on the city clerk's website, or webpage. If you click on the Glendale Votes button, you'll see the additional three, and the dates and the locations. I encourage all Glendale voters to attend one of these candidate forums, and hear each candidate's positions on current issues as well as their visions for the city's future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And because I'm filling in for Mayor Botman, I'm going to observe and respect his way of taking these cards. Otherwise, I would have oral communications that would limit itself to three minutes. But I believe that we're going to have a pretty quick meeting today. So for those who are here to speak at the oral communications at the end of the meeting, we'll get to you soon enough. Clerk Kabajin, what is next on our agenda?
Next is the adoption of ordinances, A Public Works regarding ordinance amending chapters 8.44 and 8.56 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995, updating standards for solid waste and recycling collection, introduced by Kasakian 192024.
Okay. And Mr. Garcia, you mentioned that there may be a change, or there is a small modification to this as it's coming back?
Sure. Mr. Mayor Protem, from the time the ordinance was introduced, one change to the ordinance that will leave in the provision regarding allowing self-hall will remain in the ordinance. Otherwise, the changes that were proposed last week are all part of what is before you this evening.
All right. Thank you. With that, is there anyone that would like to make a motion?
I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Najarian, seconded by Councilmember Asatrian. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman? And Mayor Protem Kasakian?
Yes. Thank you. What is next?
Next are action items. Action item A, Police Department, Regarding Police Department Real-Time Intelligence Center. One resolution to dispense with competitive bidding and authorize the city manager or his designate to enter into a five-year agreement with Constant Technologies, Inc., for the design, engineering, and installation of consoles, video displays, parts-related software, and maintenance for a real-time intelligence center in the amount of $565,600 plus 10% contingency of $56,560 for a total amount not to exceed $622,160. And two, resolution of appropriation.
And do we want a presentation? Does anyone have any questions on this item?
I'm good with it.
All right. Did you say you?
I don't need a presentation.
Do any of my colleagues require a presentation on this?
No, I think it's a great idea, and I commend the chief for bringing this forward.
Okay. All right. Thank you for, yeah.
Just a note on that, we all individually met with the chief. He walked us through his plan, the wonderful plan. And so I think the reason that we're not getting or needing a presentation is because we're well versed. And I commend you for the proactive outreach.
Well, I as well received a briefing, and I personally don't have questions, given the dollar amount. I don't think we need to go through the entire PowerPoint presentation that's before us. But Chief Sid, if you could perhaps give us the Reader's Digest version from the podium as to what these funds will be used for, and then I think we'll be ready to take action on this item. And you've spoken about this at various community meetings and town halls. I think it warrants publicly hearing it on this televised forum as well.
I have. Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members. And again, I will be brief. Lieutenant Riley was prepared with a presentation, but in the interest of time, in short, what we are looking to do is to leverage technology. It's one of initiatives I have undertaken, along with the police department, I think, the city. And what we're looking to do here is to use, utilize existing infrastructure, camera infrastructure throughout the city, public cameras, city-owned cameras, traffic cameras, as well as allow for the opportunity for some of our private partners around the city, if they want to join us, to leverage that, fuse that information together, get access to those cameras, if you will, and use them in a way that will allow us to be more effective and efficient in responding to calls for service out in the field, for doing follow-up investigations, utilizing the automatic license plate readers that we put throughout the organization, as well as being able to tap into our officers' body worn cameras, dash cameras, and to view all that, merge it all together into a control center in our building, and to be able to monitor that in real time, and to, again, be more effective and efficient in our response, to de-escalate calls, to help us solve crime on the back end. And what you have before you tonight is approval. We're going to be utilizing asset forfeiture funds, which are funds that can only be used for law enforcement purposes, education and training. We're going to utilize those funds to go into contract with a company that specializes in this, and we are going to start to build out that command center within our building.
All right. Thank you very much. It's been impressive to see other jurisdictions leverage technology to be able to fight crime and prevent crime incidents from happening. Looking forward to having it in Glendale as well. Would anyone like to make the motion?
I'd love to.
Move it.
Okay. It was a tie, but if, who wants to second?
We're all excited.
Do you want to second it, Councilmember Asatrian?
Sure. Yes.
All right. Moved by Councilmember Divine, seconded by Councilmember Asatrian. May we have roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman? And Mayor Protem Kasakian?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
Next item, please.
Next item is Action Item B, Public Works Regarding Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Authorizing a Citywide Furniture Professional Services Agreement Extension. One resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing amendments to the existing furniture services professional services agreements with JK Miklin, Inc., doing business as Yamada, Archie Texture LLC doing business as Catalyst, and Margaret Seeped, Inc., doing business as Infocom, extending duration of the contracts by two years until December 31st, 2025, with no additional funds added.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Galanian, if you could just give us a couple of sentences on what this is about?
Absolutely. Mayor Protem Kasakian, Member of City Council. So we currently have three professional services agreements, five-year agreements with three vendors to provide citywide furniture procurement. These PSAs, professional service agreements, expired a couple of weeks ago. However, we do have funding capacity to be able, for the next two years, to utilize the service of these three companies for procurement and installation of furniture as needed throughout the city facilities.
All right. Great. So there's no any additional outlay of our funds. We're just continuing it. From what I understood from a briefing, we didn't purchase any furniture during COVID, so we're extending it. With that, yes, Councilmember Asatrian?
We moved the item. I think one of the comments I had made was kind of being thoughtful about how we're replacing furniture and how we're making our offices a little more friendly and wanting to work. I, I'm not gonna, I never mince my words, so I'm just gonna say some of these buildings and some of the offices just look like a place I would not want to work. They're gray, they're depressive, they're not welcoming, and so bringing in some color and some thought into how we're making it more palatable for our employees would be worthwhile. And I hope you take that into consideration.
Certainly.
Excuse me. Kind of like those orange chairs in the city attorney's offices. Those are great. I'll move the item.
I'll second.
All right. Moved by Councilmember Divine, and seconded by Councilmember Asatrian. May we have roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman? And Mayor Protem Kasakian?
Yes. Thank you. May we have the next item, please?
Action Item C, Glendale Water and Power Regarding Authorization to Enter Into Illegal Services Agreements with Norton Rose Fulbright, US LLP, and Authorization to Enter Into Professional Services Agreement with Public Financial Management Financial Advisors, LLC. One motion authorizing the city manager or his designate to enter into and execute a legal services agreement with Norton Rose Fulbright, US LLP, to include funds for the payment of fees for past services in the amount of $11,913, and fees for three future bond issuance in fiscal years 2024, 2025, and 2026 totaling $425,000, for a total contract amount not to exceed the amount of $436,913. Two, motion authorizing the city manager or his designate to enter into and execute a professional services agreement with Public Financial Management Financial Advisors, LLC, PFM, to include funds for the payment of fees for the past services in the amount of $25,000, and fees for three future bond issuances in fiscal years 2024, 2025, and 2026 totaling $275,000 for a total contract not to exceed amount of $300,000. Three, resolution of appropriation. And that's all.
All right. Thank you very much. Or Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Mayor Protem Kasakian, Member of City Council, RGWP, needs two service agreements for bond disclosure council services, as well as financial advisor services, essentially to assist with future bond issuers in three tranches, as you recall, and it was approved by city council. The purpose would be to fund the Grayson Repowering Project, a portion of the Shoal Canyon Biogas Project, as well as other critical capital projects that have previously been approved by council. If you'd like more detail, Mr. Mellon, our Assistant General Manager, is available with a short PowerPoint. Otherwise, our request is to allow me or my designate to enter into these two service agreements.
Okay. There was a bidding process, and the two lowest bidders have been submitted for, to council for approval. And if there's any, does anyone wish to have a presentation on this?
I just think it's pretty self-explanatory. They're coming in to counsel us on our bond issuance, and I'll be glad to move the item.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Divine, and seconded by Councilmember Najarian. It looks like, what, is there a late caller?
I think we might have a call coming in.
Okay. And do we have any cards submitted on this item?
No. No.
Giving it a few minutes to make sure that the caller is not on this item?
We're waiting for it to. It is on this item.
Okay. Let's have the caller, please. Three minutes.
We have Edmund Hagopion on air. Edmund, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Hi, city council members and everybody else in the audience. I want to talk a little bit about the Bike Path project. I'm a Sycamore Woods resident, and per the information I received from the neighbors, there was one resident in the area that had requested access from the neighborhood through the maintenance roads of the Wash to CB Park. And for that information, per the public records, like Mr. Botman was following up this issue and very seriously, and was basically demanding immediate action from the city department for a result, which is very commendable. And I appreciate that. What's a little concerning for us as the neighbors, with the exception of one resident, almost everybody else has very serious and legitimate concerns about this project. The question is, has same or similar effort put in place to at least include these concerns in the study that's going on? Like the RFP, does it have any requirements from the companies that are going to do the study to include the concerns that have been brought up multiple times, and over 800 people have signed up over this issue on the website and elsewhere, and during the city council meetings, which directly relates to day-to-day lives of people who live by the Wash and will be greatly impacted by this project. And I know this format is not meant for a question-and-answer, but I'm just bringing this up to the attention of this body to know. to the attention of this body to know, we as the residents feel not being heard or not being included in the process if our concern is not in line with the, with the preferences of the body. That's at least how we feel, if, if we're not being included and our concerns are not being addressed.
Okay. Is that the rest of your remarks? All right, Mr. Hagopion, thank you for calling in. It was not on the item that is right now under consideration, although we appreciate you calling in. I did not want to interrupt and tell you that it wasn't on this item because I don't know how the telephone lines work, whether he would have been able to call back in. So we appreciate your comments. We'll take them in context at the conclusion of the meeting during oral communication. On this particular item, there was a motion by Councilmember Divine and a second by Councilmember Najarian. If there are no other questions or comments, we can have a roll call on this. Thank you.
Yes. Councilmembers Asatryan?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman, and Mayor Protam Kasakian.
Yes, thank you. All right, and now we move on to oral communications. Please read the rules into the record, and then we will start taking speakers.
Discussion, oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We have two callers.
We have two callers as well. We'll take the individuals who actually made it down to City Hall today first. Mr. Vartan Garpetian will be our first speaker, five minutes.
Change of tools, I guess. All right, and relate. Good evening, Mayor Kasakian, Mayor Protam Kasakian, and council members. My name is Vartan Garpetian, former mayor of Glendale. First, I'd like to thank you for bringing up that resolution for Artsakh. I think Artsakh happened because the entire world turned a blind eye. Artsakh happened because people did not care about the genocide that was happening in our ancestral land. Artsakh happened because no news, no news media covered it. We've seen for months, war in Ukraine was covered, war in Gaza is covered, but no word about Artsakh. And that's, that's, that's what the trust that this happened, and eight months of blockade, nine months of blockade, that was starving people to death. Not a word from anyone. In 2019, we were in Artsakh. I took it, I was part of the delegation that went from Glendale for Pan-Armenian Games. And in city of Shushi, there is a Gazan Chanots Church, which is the mother church of Artsakh, and also there is a mosque. At that time, the Armenians in Artsakh, the Artsakhsis, they brought experts from all over the world to renovate and restore that mosque because it was damaged during the war. But when they kind of pushed everyone out of Artsakh, first thing they did, they started demolishing all of our churches and damaging all of our churches. That's the difference between Armenians and, and Turks, if you will, and Nazaris. Now, I want to talk to you a little bit about the Verdugo Wash project, and mention, remind you of some of the concerns that I have about this project and the Verdugo Wash Neighborhood Coalition has about this project. We are not against having a bike lane. We are not against the transportation plan. We are not against the bicycle master plan. We are against this project going through our neighborhoods. I think the right thing to do is bring it up to the downtown and stop it there and see if that will work or not, if you can have concerts over there or not, and it's not going to affect the entire neighborhood. You know, we are concerned about public safety. We are concerned about loss of privacy. We are concerned about the light intrusion, noise intrusion. We are concerned about the construction that it's going to take for years and years and years. This is going to be a 10 miles of elevated concrete platform. This is called a green project, but believe me, there is nothing green about it. You cannot plant enough greenery to cover the 10 miles of concrete elevated platform. The environmental impact, for the, all the environmentalists in the city, for Glendale Environmental Coalition, I'd like them to take a look at the environmental impact of 10 miles of raised concrete platform inside the concrete flood control channel. Please take a look at it, and then tell the neighbors, who many of them don't even know about this project. There are 15 homes on my street. The only one that is aware of this project is me, and I was talking to my neighbors, and they were really shocked about not knowing about this project. This is not an open space, Verdugo Woodlands, Whiting Woods area, Sycamore Woods, Oakmont Woods, Rosmoine area. We don't need more open space. We do have enough open space in our neighborhoods. If you like to spend $6 million in studying the project, do it in South Glendale. There was Wilson Elementary School that the field was planned to be turned into a park so the students can use it during the day, and the neighbors could use it at evening hours. Same thing with Seridos Elementary School, and those two projects were scraped, and we don't know why. Spend the money over there and rebuild these two parks, so South Glendale will have more parks if you're looking to do an open space. I ride my bike every weekend. I may not look like it, but I do. I love riding my bike. But I don't, I don't ride on major streets. I try to stay away from major streets, just take the side streets, and I enjoy it a lot, especially in the woodlands and Whiting Woods and all of, all of the neighborhoods in Glendale. You can ride your bike safely. We, we need to have a bicycle master plan. We need to work on it. We need to fund it. But don't put this big monstrosity in our neighborhoods because the time that will take to build this project is going to really affect the quality of life in our neighborhoods. And when, when, when you see the, the rain coming and the water rushing down the, down the Wash, just take a look at the boulders that come running through the Wash, and then let's make a wise decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Garpetian. Next is Ramana Aaragi, followed by Cheryl Wales.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. So, yeah, here, it's time of elections and reelections. So I'm here still insist on, yeah, everybody's, in the time of election, everybody jumps, jumps on the wagon, affordable housing wagon. Well, they better have a real plans or some sort of detailed proposition. Yeah, I really demand this. I really need to listen to candidates, to what are their plans for housing, especially for seniors. And, yeah, otherwise you're not gonna, if you don't want to have a plan, you're not gonna have, you're not gonna look good on those ballots. I assure you, I'm pretty sure about, of it. And, yeah, as a matter of fact, I, as a public, have a much better plan for affordable housing. If you want to really consult me, you can come to me. Yeah, we can discuss for some solution for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aaragi. Next is Cheryl Wales, followed by Patrick Murphy.
Good evening, council members. My name is Cheryl Wales. I'm here this evening to tell you that I totally oppose the idea of the city creating an elevated bike path in my backyard. I, along with hundreds of others who live along the Wash, are the ones who will bear the direct brunt of this ill-conceived plan, which will destroy our quiet, safe neighborhoods. The city never reached out to us to let us know about their proposed plans. They did, however, include bike clubs and bike shop owners in their discussions and continue to involve them. This plan will cost an exorbitant amount of money to build, money which could be better spent elsewhere in the city. In addition to the building cost, how much will it cost to maintain the bike path, and who will be doing that maintenance? Despite what many proponents try to tell us, it is obvious from looking at other areas where bike paths have been constructed that crime will definitely increase if this plan comes to fruition. If you must build something, I do not object to bringing the path to Brand Boulevard, as that's commercial, but would not want anything in residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Mr. Murphy?
Good evening, Mayor Protam Kasakian, council members. I want to thank you for the resolution regarding Artsakh this evening, and I pray for awareness nationwide, worldwide. I am speaking on behalf of the Verdugo Wash Neighborhood Coalition and SaveTheWash.com. I want to further my bicycle transportation plan comments that I made on the 9th of January when the report was given on the transportation plan. I think we can all agree that we want and need safe streets for everyone, including cyclists. But not taking the Public Works' recommendation for study corridors puts the people, especially children, at risk and increases future liability for the city. It appears that, from the report on January 9th, that the resources should be dedicated in the south of town as this is where most of the incidents are occurring. As regards the Verdugo Wash, there was a meeting held November 15th of 2022 where you approved the visioning plan, visioning study to move forward. Mayor Protam, you invited me up to City Hall and had a meeting with staff on November 30th in, in your conference room. We discussed moving forward. The coalition has heard nothing from staff since that meeting. We've had no news or invitations on stakeholder advisory groups, just like we had no news or invitations on the neighborhood committees for the bicycle transportation plan that I mentioned on January 9th. The coalition is not going away, and we will not be shut out. Neighborhoods represented by the coalition include Rosmoine, Verdugo Woodlands, Royal Canyon, Oakmont Woods, Sycamore Woods, Whiting Woods, Mountain Oaks, Montrose, Spar Heights, amongst others. There was recently a request for proposals that was published by the Community Development Department. We were not informed of that RFP that went out. We learned of it from a very experienced and qualified California company who will be submitting a proposal. They actually reached out to us. The coalition met with the company upon their request, and one point which was brought up by them was that there were fatal flaws, their, their words, fatal flaws in every chapter of the initial visioning plan. In addition to not being informed of these items, there has been no news on the parameter document from the state for the $6 million grant. California is experiencing a $38 billion deficit this year, estimated to be $68 billion next year, and $150 billion over the next three years. We believe it is irresponsible to be spending $6 million on, my words, foolhardy project that is likely to cost over $5 billion, if you consider and use the Garden Bridge project as an example. I won't go through the math this evening, but if ever you want to talk about the math, I've looked at it. Councilmember Divine, thank you for your service, by the way. It, it is too bad you will be unable to get another vote because you were given information prior to the meeting on November 22nd, excuse me, November of 2022, that was not true. The funding was and is not contingent on the path going from the basin all the way to CB Park. This loss of funding was not in the report of November 15th of 2022. You were told that crime was not an issue with these projects. Well, the Atlanta PD had to create a bike force, which consisted of 15 officers to mitigate the crime issues occurring as a result of the Belt Line, that 22-mile Belt Line. Crime is most definitely an issue. Fire danger. You were told that the fire department was part of the stakeholder group at that same meeting and had no issues with the Wash. Again, not true. I had a meeting with the battalion, a battalion chief of the Glendale Fire Department and a staff captain on the Whiting Woods Bridge in February of '23, and they knew nothing about the project. I met with Fire Marshal McLean in March of '23. He only received a PowerPoint and did not receive a formal presentation from staff. The current fire code does not consider this use. It's, it's not addressed in the code. My insurance this year went from $2,600 to $6,200 annually due to being in an extreme fire hazard area. I live up on Sycamore on the north side of town. A neighbor's policy down the street from me was canceled unless they cut down protected trees. That's what the insurance company told them. You cut down the protected oaks, and your insurance will be reinstated. This will only get worse if the path is approved.
Mr. Murphy, continue. Go ahead.
Thank you. The coalition believes that it is incumbent upon the city council to become very well-versed in what is being proposed, as in some cases, you may be relying on what you are being told, which may not always be accurate. The money that is being spent will add more debt and operating costs that the city does not have and will further burden our children and grandchildren. We saw $300 million in bonds approved for GWP recently, added to billions for the White Wash Path. A cost-benefit analysis should be conducted now and prior to spending any more of this $6 million grant. Mayor Botman said last week that this is for the children, and it is not a recreational path. He is absolutely wrong. People will not be commuting or going to the grocery store through the Wash Path. There are no grocery stores along the path. Lastly, no one is talking about how this will affect the plentiful wildlife which uses the Wash as a thoroughfare. We recently photographed a bear family from the Whiting Woods Bridge. They use this Wash. They will be eliminated. Thank you very much, and I appreciate you letting me go on to the end.
Thank you, and I just want to say that, I've mentioned this a few times, I know when Mr. Calvert is here and when this topic has come and topics related to it. I am personally asking, I'm sure some of my colleagues may agree, but I want to go on the record again to say that this coalition of neighbors, individuals, whether supportive or opposed, whatever the viewpoint is of staff, I really could care less. They need to be engaged and involved and approached and told about what is happening with these studies, whatever is progressing. If they're not approached, if I hear from any individuals that they did not know about it, an organized group, individuals may be able to ignore postcards or mailers or emails, but Mr. Murphy has demonstrated that through time and again of appearing here, that he is plugged in, he's engaged, and he wants to be informed about it. If they continue to say that they are being ignored, this is not something I would be able to support in any form, whatever the leg of it is. I think it's just basic decency for us to engage with our neighbors, again, whether we agree with them or not. Sure. Next, we have four callers, or do we have more?
We have five callers.
Five callers, all right. Let's take these five callers and then try to call it an evening.
Our first caller is Diane Martin. Diane, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity of speaking this evening. My name is Diane Martin, as she said, and I've been a Glendale resident for over 25 years. And I'm calling to register my opposition to the plan to convert the Verdugo Wash into a bike path. And mayor, your statement just before my call, I really appreciate your support and your insistence that I, a member of the coalition, be notified. So thank you very much. The Wash was built as an act, as an act, to act as a flood control channel to protect the lives and property of the nearby residents, as we've heard from many today. In addition, some areas of the Wash, including my home in Mountain Oaks, are designated as extreme fire hazard by the county. And like Mr. Murphy suggested and others, my insurance has been dropped and doubled and tripled when we've had to be, when, when high, high fire times come in and they ask us to evacuate our home. So these, you know, these areas of, and many homes, you know, with any fire, increased fire risk could significantly impact our neighborhoods and potentially destroy them. And some of the, you know, neighborhoods along the Wash have not been burned for over 60 years, which is amazing, including my home and my neighborhood in Mountain Oaks. 95% of the fires are started by human activity. Considering this risk, the construction and the ongoing maintenance and preservation of wildlife, this direction is questionable to the integrity and the uniqueness of our community. Thank you, and my prayers and support continue to be with the people of Armenia.
Thank you. Next speaker, caller?
Our next caller is Dawn. Dawn, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, council, and I thank you for dedicating your time to the city. And Mayor Protam Kasakian, I appreciate you coming up the hill here to Montrose and meeting with people. meeting with people at the Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf. My concern is the forcing of bicycle lanes upon us, especially up here in Locust. I do ride a bicycle. I drive a car that plugs in. I get some exercise. I save some gasoline money. But to eliminate traffic lanes while building more housing and increasing population does not seem to make sense. The bicycle study of 2020 predicted Locust Avenue will be at full capacity in 2040, only 16 years away. If we didn't increase population in the city, that might give us time to create viable transit system, but that's probably not going to happen, and many residents cannot ride a bike. 95% probably of residents will not benefit from these bike systems. They look on paper. Everybody exercises, no pollution. In a perfect world, that would be great, but we have thousands of cars for every bike, even if they end up electric cars. I don't think that will change in two decades. People will exercise or they won't. A very small percentage might be inclined to ride a bike with these lanes. And I'm not anti-bicycler, bicycler. As far as the road, on the road, some of the bicyclists say they will not ride in protected lanes because they don't get swept by the street cleaning, and there is debris there that will punch your tires. Most of the people will just be hampered from getting from point A to point B. Regarding the Locust Center project, there were other ways to slow traffic that were never considered. I talked to the traffic department on this. We can now legally drop the speed limit, and we should do that up here. Also, I think to ignore the neighbors at the north end of the Verdugo Wash project is not really considerate to the taxpayer. This is a small, vocal minority, and there's a bike plan, I get that, but the general public, I agree with the previous speaker, you sent 22,000 mailers, and half of those people are unaware of these changes, the Verdugo Wash and the Locust Center project for the mailers. They don't know. I've talked to my neighbors, over 75%, were unaware of the Locust Center project, and I'll bet you none of them know about the Verdugo. I'm going to just be frank, there's a lot of money involved here. I get the impression that it's, hey, we have free state and federal tax money, let's spend it or we lose it. Most people don't know that 40% of the additional gas tax money that we pay goes to public transportation and bike lanes. I like riding all of those. It's fun not to have to drive. But the cost and the, the amount of people that use them and not listening to the residents, the majority of the residents, I think is wrong. And I think most people don't know, especially about ripping up Locust Center, they won't know until that lane's ripped up. And I'll also be frank, I wonder if the council really cares about what happens up here in Locust Center. We're steep here, the bike lanes will be underutilized, and we have other ways to slow traffic. And I agree with the people who spoke on Verdugo. It's a lot of money being spent, and it is infringing on, on their, their property rights. Again, I appreciate what you folks do, and we just want to make sure our voices are heard up here. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much. We had one more caller call in, and I've instructed the city clerk that after, how many more do we have?
We currently have five calls.
Okay. So after this, I will not take any more callers, but if someone were to walk in through those doors and wanted to speak because they took the effort to come down to City Hall, telephone calls are a luxury for those who want to be able to enjoy time at home, prepare dinner, whatever else. But if someone were to walk in and hand in a card, we'll accept it, but no more callers on oral communication. Next caller, please.
Next caller is Jackie Yish. Jackie, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Kassakian, city council, thank you for the opportunity to talk. In mid-December, The Los Angeles Times had a detailed article on the front page about problems with the two largest landfills in Los Angeles County. Chiquita Canyon has an ongoing underground fire, which melted part of the gas collection system and sent odors into the neighborhoods surrounding the landfill. Sunshine Canyon's gas collection system was flooded, which has also caused significant odor problems. In addition, if the gas collection systems are not working properly, the landfills will emit copious quantities of methane, a worse greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide, as well as toxic pollutants. In light of these issues, two weeks ago, we, that is, the Gacha and G E C, sent each of you, as well as Mr. Galanian, a letter asking questions about the Shoal landfill. We are asking you to place on an upcoming agenda a full discussion of the current conditions at Shoal, as well as answers to our questions. Thank you for considering this, and we hope that you will put it on an agenda as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Judy Schlegel. Judy, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Hello.
Hi, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Protam and council members. I do appreciate the opportunity to call in this evening. My name is Judy Schlegel, longtime Glendale resident. I'm calling to express my very strong opposition to the plan to convert the Verdugo Wash to a bike path. I lived in the neighborhood of the wash and was so very surprised to hear of the plan to convert it. The city staff has not performed an appropriate outreach to the affected neighborhood. Why weren't we, and I know you can't answer tonight, but why weren't we given a direct mail campaign regarding the commencement of the visioning phase? On February 19th, you only had about 120 people come to the public outreach meeting out of 197,000 people living in the city of Glendale. Along with that, there's thousands of residents living directly on top or adjacent to the wash. Lot of liability for the city, lot of liability for the people. One of the reasons for the low turnout for that meeting was poor communication and outreach with the residents that are directly affected. Is this something underhanded that the city doesn't want us to know about, and they don't want to tell us everything? This is really disappointing with our city, and I will continue to be there to fight my opposition and direct my opposition to this bike plan. And I think the money should be spent somewhere else in better use of the city and not in the danger of our neighborhood and our children and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Ellen Levis. Ellen, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ellen Levis. We live in North Glendale, and our house backs up to the wash. When the original, somebody, the first person I first heard about the concept of a bike path used along the wash, it was a compelling idea. And once I started thinking about it and investigating the issues, it really became apparent that there are a lot of implications with creating a bike path along the wash. It's a complex issue. The main issue from my perspective is safety. Many parts of the wash are adjacent to private property where there's little or no visibility from, or access from outside. These areas would be difficult to manage at many levels. For example, if a cyclist were able, were to get into a serious accident, it could easily go unnoticed for a long time. There is also the issue of property owner's safety and privacy. Another compounding factor is the extreme fire risk in these areas that have been previously mentioned tonight. The southeast side of the Verdugo Mountains have not burned since the early 1960s, introducing more access, and people significantly increase the fire risk. Washes were originally built as flood control channels, and really, they should be called flood control channels. When it rains, as happened last year, potentially deadly amounts of high-velocity water and debris come down these flood control channels. And if you haven't done so, if you're willing to get out when it's raining really hard and has been raining really hard, it's worth going and taking a look because it's a ton of water goes through those channels. Before those, these flood control channels existed, people died. I mean, that's why they built them to begin with. There are herring counts, if you go into the history of North Glendale, Montrose, of walls of water wiping out people, structures, and cars. And if you recall, in Santa Barbara, when we had those large storms a few years ago, the same thing happened. Remember the news reports, there were people, some people weren't able to evacuate fast enough because the water was so powerful. Putting a bike path along those flood control channels significantly increases risk. The no trespassing signs and the fences are there for a reason. The liability will increase if you try and incorporate bike paths. Other areas of concern include wildlife habitat, disruption, cost, and security. The bottom line is that we need to think very, very carefully about using a resource that was originally created to save lives and property for other purposes than its original intent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller.
Thank you. Our next caller is Rick. Rick, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Go ahead, Rick. Are you there?
Rick? Hello? I'll put him on hold for a sec. Our next caller is Walter Bagramian. Walter, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Mr. Bagramian? Walter?
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure, we can hear you. Go ahead. You all have five minutes.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Protam, council members, city staff. As you may remember, how expensive lumber was a couple of years ago. Two-by-fours selling $10. They're about there that now. New and used cars were very hard to find and very expensive, and now people could get much better deals on cars. Can you imagine if federal, state, and local government tried to regulate lumber market or new and used car market? We probably still have high prices and imbalance in those markets. Now, with Glendale's apartments or Glendale apartment rental market, please let the free market do its thing. You can see a bull market were fixed by free market. So you may try little adjustments here and there, but please try not to overregulate the apartment rental market, especially using methods means that city of Los Angeles started in 1978, and to this date, they have not been able to fix it. We're thinking about, like, we're talking about artificial intelligence, how advanced we are, but when it comes to housing, you want to use a force or bullying landlords method. There are other tools available to fix it. Fixing housing is extremely easy despite what we hear in media. There's no housing crisis. All you have to do is look at the household formations, the amount of units that were built, and a bad job by Federal Reserve, and you'll get your answer. I'm here asking you not to overdo, overregulate with major renovations eviction program. Please don't misunderstand, uh, please don't misunderstand me. I feel for tenants, but please understand that units with deferred maintenance could be health and safety hazard. When landlords renovate these units, they provide places that people could call home. Besides providing safe and healthy places, landlords hire local painters, carpenters, contractors, and shop from local stores for vanities, tiles, cabinets, flooring, paint, windows, and et cetera, et cetera, when they're doing the major renovations eviction program. Please pay attention that home sales in our city are down about 40%. You know, please go back, check, two years ago, you'll see that. And these renovations provide jobs and support for our local employees and stores. You don't want these people to be unemployed, and the fact that they're not union members and they don't have any union officials coming to city council meetings and complain, that doesn't mean they're not going to be unemployed because of your actions. Please don't close down local businesses. If you need to make adjustments to dollar amounts for move-out expenses, I would understand, but with sunset clause, and don't make it a side business for tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. Last caller.
Thank you. Our last caller is Rick. We'll try him again. Rick, you're on air. You have five minutes.
Rick Beuler, Beuler.
He might have dropped the call.
All right. We're going to call it an evening. But we have new business, actually. Who would like to read the new business item into the record?
Yes. I move that the council hereby approves the city attorney's appointment of Aaron Israel as senior assistant city attorney for the city of Glendale. This motion constitutes the written statement of recognized attainment required by Article 24, Section 5, Subsection 2 of the Charter.
Who would like to second that?
I'll second.
All right. Motion made by Councilmember Najarian, seconded by Asadirian. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadirian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman and Mayor Protam Kassakian.
Yes. Thank you very much. And if there's nothing else, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second? Thank you. We are adjourned. Have a good evening.